Okay, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and like to welcome everybody. Does everybody have an agenda? We'll just go right down the line. I don't see any minutes.
I apologize, there's no minutes.
No minutes in the packet.
From this April 20th.
From April 20th?
August 20th, sorry.
A little behind, Paul.
Okay, we have two road encroachments, one from Charles Highland. I hope I pronounced that right.
How do you spell the velocity? Okay, thank you.
And he's on 28th Road. He says northeast.
Yep.
I should think that should be northwest.
Northeast.
Oh, he's east of the highway.
He's east of the 220.
Yeah, but Division is eighth. The Farmington Highway is Eighth Lane.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, you might want to change that on there.
Is there a crossroad there?
It's in 26 North, Four West, Southwest Quarter of Section 17. He's just, you know where that Garrett guy, he's got that trailer?
Yeah.
He bought a hundred and lots of property from Garrett.
Yeah, that's definitely northwest.
Just, yeah.
So this is north of Shoto.
Yep, right at the foot of the hill going up, Lightner or something.
And what road did he say? 26th?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
And it's to put in a driveway, he's gonna build a new house there, I believe.
I would move to approve the encroachment permit.
No seconded.
Been moved and seconded to approve the encroachment permit for Charles Highland. Any further discussion?
Did Allen sign up on it?
Not yet.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carried.
Now... Just one thing on that. I don't know if the permit asks for it, but, you know, at a minimum, I think, asking for an intersection, because a road doesn't tell you where it's gonna be. A road alone doesn't tell you, so... You know, an intersect, yeah. What's the closest intersection, at least? That, and I think people relate to that more than the legal description, you know, of where it's at.
There is a spot there, further description, so that could be a crease to put in there.
Because when they just say, I mean, a road could be like, you know, miles and miles and miles.
A black league road. Seven, seven, two, 28th Road.
So it does give an address, that's helpful, yeah. I don't think it's too far off the highway. No.
Now we have one for Northwest Energy. It's on Miller Lane. In, uh... We're gonna put a two-inch gas main bore under the roadway.
I'd move to approve that. I think that's in process right now. Yeah, they're going under the river with it, too. Yeah, they're going through over two.
Flood plane, perfect.
Which they've already put in.
How do you have to have a flood plane to go under?
Well, it's just like, why do they need a road encroachment when they're going under the road? Well... Just setting it's rolling out here.
Little turf battle in between. I would move to approve this road encroachment.
Oh, I have a question.
I think...
I did, I did, I knew seconded.
Just a little ready for it all.
No, 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 I have a question. Has Allen signed up on it?
Not yet. It's been moved and seconded to approve the encroachment permit for Northwest Energy on Miller Lane. Any further discussion? None appearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carried. Junk vehicle contract, and I believe this is kind of a yearly deal.
Yep.
Austin, would you enlighten us?
Pretty straightforward, that's the funding we get from the DEQ to run our junk vehicle program. Basically, our large expenses last year were advertising, and I hope we can get that back into our account so we can, we can start advertising again, because we did have a significant uptick in people using the program.
And the amount on this contract is fifteen thousand, four hundred, fifty-seven dollars and forty cents to the DEQ Motor Vehicle Recycling and Disposal Division.
I'd move to accept the contract.
And seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract with DEQ Junk Vehicle. Any further discussion? None appearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both? Motion carried. Policy resolution. Last meeting, we approved the changes to the policy, and now we need a resolution to make that official, I believe. And the Resolution 2020-26.
I'd move to approve Resolution 2020-26.
No seconded.
Been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2020-26 to make the policy, uh... Changes official. Any further discussion? None appearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carried. Okay, currently, the hearing is open on the budget. I will take comment on our proposed budget.
Paul, can you give us a quick overview of the budget?
So the, um... Once we plug in all the information, receive our taxable values from the Department of Revenue, and I enter it into the worksheet that the Department of Baden sends us, we could increase our spending authority on our page, on our front page, by two hundred and thirty dollars. Which doesn't sound like much, but it's better than going down.
Um, two hundred and thirty dollars?
Two hundred and thirty dollars. Yep, that was it. Everybody stayed pretty well into their budget and under their budget, which was really, really great, because as long as that cash available at the end of year is available, it just makes it easier for the public to see that we are conscientious and we do care about taxpayers. The Road Department has increased their spending, but it also increased their capital assets. With the road fire last year, some of the replacements were in better quality, better, more...
More.
More, yes, 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 yes. The, on page four, which is our special levy requirement sheet, the council on aging, that stays the same at twenty-eight thousand every year. The extension has had two levies. One was done in, in the year 2000, which set a fifty-eight thousand levy, which they get every year. And then 2008, they had where they can have up to eight mils. This year, theirs went down because of the savings from not having to have the second extension agent, and theirs dropped 2.42 mils, which saved them from having to dip into their eight mil allowance from the Resolution 2008.
How many mils did it save him, Paul, at two point?
2.42.
But they have money in there this year for getting that second extension agent.
And we have, we're in discussion with Extension about doing interviews sometime this fall. Because of COVID, everything got put on hold, so we will be pursuing that at some point this fall.
The library budget, um, it starts on the front page, because they're allowed so, so much. The worksheets allow them to increase their spending authority, not by very much, I think it was twenty-two dollars. And they also have two resolutions and two special levies. One was in 1998, that gives them forty-five thousand, that stays with them forever. And then 2017, they requested two mils. So this year, they increased their mileage by .81, but having to dip into their 2017 two mils, they only use .99. Everything else is just pretty much the same, ambulance levies, forty-five thousand, that they can put toward a new ambulance, and I think Jim will have some updates on ambulance stuff at the end here. Health insurance, of course, increased. Our health insurance did not increase. It's just depending on the cash, how many people took the insurance.
So your insurance didn't go up this year?
No, went down ten dollars per person. Yes, we're very, very fortunate. Next year is not going to look as good.
That was offset by property casualty.
Yeah, and the property and casualty, which is the comp insurance on the, on the front page, that went up twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, something like that.
Is that because of the fires that the Road Department...
Oh, no.
Not only here, but nationwide, the insurance companies have taken active ahead.
Right, and we are trust, so it's, you know, including all of the counties that are in that trust, and there was some other...
But I think their reinsurance, they're, were insured through the trust up to a certain point, then they have a reinsurance policy, and I think that cost went up, and that's what they passed through to us.
So it was not only our drawing on that?
Correct.
It was other, yes, the trusts as opposed? And can you remind me, is this your MECO?
Yes. Other than that, everything else is pretty much, um, we just have a great, we have a great county. We have great departments, and they're very conscientious.
I think page five, we ought to note that that, uh... Twenty-eight, twenty-one is the Barca Road Fund, that's the new gas tax. And that's gonna enable us to try to get more graveling done throughout the county. I think that's a pretty important point to make.
Is that up from last year, Joe?
Uh, we've been accruing, it did, we had a pretty good payment this year. We're anticipating it to drop because of the lack of travel in the state through the pandemic, but we do have a little cash there, and we're hoping to be able to get more graveling done because of it.
Depending on the winter. And along those lines, our workers' compensation used to be funded through a MECO trust.
Yes.
They dissolved that, and we're now in with the Montana State Fund. Fairly significant savings.
Forty thousand? Uh, forty thousand.
Buddy, have anything else on the budget?
I think you ought to talk about the amendments, news we got yesterday.
Uh, he...
He's gonna be down in the airport, okay.
Alrighty, if there's nothing further on the budget, I'll go ahead and close the hearing. And then we have a Resolution 2020-27 to approve the budget.
I would recommend that we approve 2020-27 for the next year.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2020-27 to approve the budget for this coming year. Any further discussion?
I would like to thank all of the three of you, and Allen, who we really worked hard to make all this work. It does get...
I would like to thank...
Oh, you guys are, you guys are patient with me, and even though I'm Betty Buzzkill.
But it, it gets more complicated every year as stuff filters down from Helen on...
I'd ask you don't put that name in the paper.
Oh, my Betty Buzzkill?
Capital letters.
Yeah, right.
Old.
Any further discussion? None appearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carried. Now, we have a maternal-child help grant for the Health Department.
And while you're looking for numbers, um, I, again, this is where I did not prepare the resolution, if it's an amendment, so is it an amendment, or is this just for this year?
It doesn't say amendment.
Okay, so then we're okay, then, because that follows in with the budget resolution, then she's already put that in for her budget, so we're...
And the amount is six thousand, forty-nine dollars. And I would assume that it's kind of an ongoing deal, yearly deal?
Yes.
Housekeeping deal. I'd move to accept that grant.
Not seconded, yeah.
Been moved and seconded to approve the maternal-child health grant for the Health Department. Need further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carried. Okay, now, we have the DNRC presentation on the floodplain, are they with us, Paul?
Not yet.
Okay.
So I would just say that the invitation is from Tiffany Lyden, Outreach Specialist, DNRC Floodplain Management Program. She'll probably introduce herself, but just, okay, how do you spell that, Paul?
What was her title, Paul?
Outreach Specialist, DNRC Floodplain Management.
Paul and I met with Furin and another gal last week.
Yeah.
And kind of gave us a presentation, and she wanted to, or asked if she could give a presentation to the whole board, so that's it here.
Tiffany?
Oh, there, hi, Paul!
Hello!
Great!
So, just to let you know, you're, we're in a commissioner meeting, so the three commissioners, clerk and recorder, our road department, our sanitarian, myself, and the local newspaper.
Great, okay. Thank you. Um, and then I guess maybe I'll just introduce who we've got here on the, on the call remotely. Is myself, Tiffany Lyden, and Nikien Wadsworth, who we've been working with you in the past, Paul and Fisher Hotchkiss. We do a lot of the outreach for floodplain mapping projects around the state. Um, and then we've got Steve Story, who is our bureau chief.
Morning.
We've worked, been working with all this. And then Mark English, who is our project liaison out of, from FEMA Region Eight, out of Denver, who helped us with a lot of the grid application, and will be helping us with a project as well from, from that standpoint.
Good morning.
Bunch of heavy hitters, huh?
I wouldn't say that.
Yeah. Um, well, Paul, I don't know if you wanna do a, do you want me to just kind of jump in, or do you wanna kick this off or anything?
No, I think I'll turn it over to you, Tiffany. I just gave the group here a quick intro on who you are and your, um, your title, so that's all I've done so far, but it's all yours.
Okay, super, okay. Well, let's keep this kind of informal, if there are questions, just chime in, and we'll, or if we want to stop and discuss anything, we could certainly do that. But I guess I just want to kind of, to start, we, we've been working with Paul and a bit with Commissioner Hotchkiss, and then the city with the mayor and Mike Maples, Public Works over the past few months on a project to update the existing floodplain maps and study information in Teton County. As part of that, we at DNRC applied for some grant funding through FEMA to update the floodplain mapping in your county and also in Powell County this year. And we recently received notice that we did receive that grant funding, so we are just starting to get work on getting things started and underway, which is what prompted this meeting with you today. We thought it would be a good chance, time to give you an overview of, of the project, what's involved, and an idea of the timeline, and, and just kind of walk, step through that with you. And, but before I kind of get into the details of the project, I just wanted to start with a, a little overview of what floodplain maps are and a little bit about your existing floodplain maps in Teton County. So if everybody can see the screen, let me know if it's not advancing on your end. But the, the purpose of floodplain maps is really to identify areas of flood risk, so that we can try to keep people and property out of harm's way. And we at the state, and FEMA, and you at the county, and the city of Shoto, we all are part of that to work together to identify and those flood risks and try to reduce damage from them. As part of that, we do the best that we can to map those areas that are at risk of getting flooded using the info, the best information that we have available at the time. So this is a flood, floodplain map that you see on the screen here. Um, but one thing to keep in mind is that a floodplain map isn't just mapping any area that could get wet from a, from a spring flood event or, or kind of some of those smaller events. What it's mapping is what we call the hundred-year flood event. And that's kind of a misnomer, because sometimes people think, well, if it's, if it flooded this year, we're not gonna have another hundred-year flood event for another hundred years, so we can plan ahead for that. A better way to think of it is it's a, that type of a flood event that has a 1% chance of occurring in a year. The other thing to keep in mind is these maps are, don't show every 1% or 100-year flood event perfectly, because as you know, and as this picture kind of shows, sometimes there's, there are things that happen during a flood event, like a downed tree or a blocked culvert, that's gonna cause the water to behave a little differently in spots. But by and large, what we're, our aim is for the maps to really show those areas at risk of getting flooded in a, in a large 1% flood event.
So Tiffany, while you have that map up, the effective date on it? Either one.
Yeah, great question, Paul. Nineteen eighty-three is, is the, the date of your current maps, the maps you use today. And I'll, I have some more pictures of that zoomed in a little bit. Are you seeing this on a fairly large screen? Can, like, commissioners, can you see the, the screen fairly well?
Yep.
Okay. So the floodplain maps that you have today, as Paul talked about, are these nineteen eighty-three flood insurance rate maps. And they get used by a number of different entities for different purposes. You use them at the county level to determine where your floodplain regulations apply, so that anytime anyone's doing work in an area that's mapped as having a flood risk, they go through the process with Paul to get a floodplain permit, to make sure that whatever they're building or constructing is going to be safe and not affect others in a, in a flood event. Because you have floodplain regulations in these mapped areas, in this case, it's that kind of shaded area on the Teton River there, that's your hundred-year floodplain on the Teton River in this particular location. Because you have floodplain regulations that you administer in these shaded areas, federally-backed flood insurance is available to anyone in Teton County. The maps also get used by insurance agents to determine flood insurance premiums, and they get used by mortgage companies to determine if a house that they're financing has a risk of being flooded. The maps also get used locally for emergency management, or emergency planning and other purposes, like roads that could get overtopped, other things that might be expected in a flood event. It helps provide some of that, uh, ahead-of-the-time information. So because of that, we, it, it really stands to reason that the map should really accurately reflect what's at risk of getting flooded. So we recognize that sometimes they might need to be updated, if there's better data available or if there's been a, a change in it.
So Tiffany, before you move off of that one, I just wanted to, so just for the commissioners, that shaded area, it's really difficult to determine whether a proposed development is in that shaded area, because you don't really have very, you've got a road and a section line, and that's about all you have to go off of when you're trying to pinpoint where that proposed development may, may be on the map. And I think that that's where this new mapping is gonna really provide a lot easier way to look at proposals. That's all I've got.
Yeah, no, you're, that's great, Paul. Um, you're absolutely right, well, um, so here's, so I just want to kind of show, you actually have had floodplain maps in Teton County since nineteen seventy-seven. And that's the map over on the left side there. Um, those maps were called flood hazard boundary maps. They were produced using whatever information they had at the time. Um, and then in nineteen eighty-three, you had, um, you got a new set of maps that were issued by FEMA called flood insurance rate maps. Those are the maps you have today. Um, one thing I wanted to point out is that you'll see in this particular screen is that the nineteen seventy-seven map exactly matches that nineteen eighty-three map. That's because for a lot of your county, they just used that information from the seventies and reprinted it on the nineteen eighty-three maps. So even though it may say nineteen eighty-three, the information behind that really was gathered or looked at sometime in the, in the mid to late seventies. And just as Paul said, um, it's pretty challenging to use these maps, uh, for, for, for the county's purposes. So I think that's one of the reasons that Paul has done a really great job, I, I believe, working with Mike, Mike from the city to try to convert these paper shaded area maps into something that's a little bit more usable for the county. Um, and I believe he worked with FEMA on this a number of years ago, but, uh, he was able to take the, the information, and they were able to digitize those paper maps so that he could put them into a GIS platform and overlay them onto aerial photography, um, which makes it a whole lot easier to understand where the floodplain, what the floodplain maps are trying to show and, and where. So in this case, and Paul, you could jump into, the red that you're seeing on this map is, uh, is that hundred-year floodplain, that shaded area that we saw on those previous maps.
Yeah.
I might just add that if you go onto Paul's office under the county website, that same map is available.
Yep, that's where Tiffany got it. It looks very familiar.
Okay, good. Yeah, I mean, it, it, I think you've done a really great job, and, and you know what? great job at, at, you know, if nothing else, it's really helped to increase the awareness and understanding, uh, from people about the current map floodplains in the county. Um, and I think you even pulled how many people, you know, how many views, uh, happen on that, uh, particular website.
Right.
And it looks like it, it does get used and people are looking at it.
Yep.
So the one thing to keep in mind though, um, that although you have this, which is really much more helpful than those, uh, paper kind of grade maps, um, the floodplain part of it, that red, you know, the red mapping is still really, is still pretty darn old. It's really from those 1977 and 1983 maps. So aerial photography might, might be newer, but that, that mapping is still based on some pretty old data. Um, and just a case in point, I just clicked that same part of Paul's mapping product to show you just it does, you know, really match up with those shaded maps. Okay. So that's the case throughout most of the county. Um, there are a couple of exceptions that I just wanted to make you aware of. Um, when those 1983 maps were produced, they did do some adjustments where they had some other information. And they did do some limited flood studies on portions of three rivers in your county. And that's at the bottom of that screen there. Um, you'll see it says early eighties flood studies. So there was a flood study done on about six miles of the Teton River, kind of in and around Shoto, uh, 1.6 miles of Spring Creek through Shoto and, uh, a portion of the Sun River that was done in conjunction with Caspian River maps. Uh, those flood studies involved some on-the-ground survey work and engineering and they were, were able to produce maps with some more detailed information, which included elevations for how high the water would be expected to come in a hundred-year flood event. And they also delineated a flood wave, which is the area of the river where you'd see the deepest and fastest moving water during a flood event. Um, but those are really the only areas where there was any sort of, um, study work done. Um, and, and it, uh, it certainly helped improve the accuracy and, and provided more information. Um, but I guess the take-home message is that that study work was done in the early eighties, which is nearly 40 years ago now. And so I think it provides a, an opportunity to, uh, to talk about sure that there is updated, more accurate information and, um, technologies now that can more accurately map your flood risk on those streams. And so that's, that's what's really kind of prompted embarking on, uh, this project to update your maps for the 1983 information. Okay. So, um, like I said, sort of, there's been, or this kind of idea that at some point it would be a good idea to update your maps. Kind of prior to this, there has been some discussions with Paul, with, um, some of our DNRC counterparts who have, who help with, help him with permitting and with, um, uh, regulation kind of questions and things that, hey, it would be a good idea at some point to, to get updated information. Um, that's also something that we've been doing at the state level and nationally actually, is to try to get more updated information out there and convert some of these paper, old paper maps into more, uh, useful, updated information that's going to really reflect the current, uh, what's, uh, the current conditions and what's currently at risk. So we've been chipping away at the state level to, to do this very same thing with a, a number of other counties statewide. Um, so, uh, and we've done a lot of the, we've worked with a lot of neighboring counties and a lot of other counties around the state. And so, um, we have just kind of kept a, a list of those counties that still needed attention to, to get updated information and Teton and Powell County actually were ones where, uh, we kind of finally were able to, uh, get to and, uh, propose that, hey, let's, let's embark on this project to, to try to get your two counties updated, uh, with some funding. So we were in some discussions with Paul and with the city and the mayor, um, kind of early on. And in April, Paul, you worked with your, the commissioners to provide a letter of support for us. Uh, what we do is we apply for grant funding for these projects. We don't have, uh, that money in-house to do that. So we apply for, uh, federal, uh, federal grants to, to fund studies like this. Um, so you graciously provided a support letter that we included in our grant application. That's there, here on the right. So in May, we applied for, we put together a lot of the information. We applied for a FEMA grant for, like, your county as well as for Powell County. And while we were waiting to hear, um, we were able to actually start some, uh, initial work outside of this grant application to collect some ground photography data. It's called, it's called LiDAR. Um, I'll go over that in just a second. But we were able to fund that through some other, uh, grants that we have. Um, and it provides some really helpful topography information for you, uh, for lots of different things. But, uh, one, it's definitely needed for floodplain mapping. So we, it was kind of one of the, the first steps that , uh, we needed to do and, and were able to get out of the way even before we, um, heard on the grant board. So, um, progressing along in August, we got word that the grant was awarded and we have been working, uh, in the last few weeks on selecting contractors and getting contracts underway. We, not only do we not have the funding at, at the state level to undertake these projects, we don't also have the horsepower, the, the, uh, the people in place to, to do all of the work that's involved. So we contract out a lot of that work, but we do all of the managing and coordination of, of these projects. And so then we're here, uh, just in the fall here trying to get, getting this project underway. Okay. So what does it involve? Um, it's really, uh, updating all of your existing mapped floodplains in the county. And believe it or not, you have a lot of them, um, about 433 miles of mapped floodplain. So we, uh, will be, uh, working with you and working with, uh, contractors to get, uh, data on all of those and get flood studies done on all of those, uh, so that , um, all of those can have updated floodplain maps to eventually replace your current maps. Uh, who's involved in this? Um, we have our crew at the DNRC Hellinaw floodplain office. Uh, we, you've met Tracy and Shay Bodine, um, at least Commissioner Hachkis did, I think, last, uh, two weeks ago. Um, they work, uh, as part of our project or part of our team as well. Um, Mark with FEMA Region Eight will be working with us on this. Um, and then these are the contractors that we have started to utilize to get some of the data collection and engineering work on that, to do for flood studies. Um, the survey work, I'll touch on in just a second. That has been contracted, but we haven't, um, gotten those contracts underway yet for the, the second part of the study work, the hydrology and the engineering and, and mapping work. So those are labeled on here as to be determined, uh, but we'll certainly coordinate with you when, when we have those folks identified. So sometimes people ask, well, what in the world goes into a flood study? Um, you just sort of redraw the lines based on, you know, new information. How, well, how does that happen? Um, what, what's involved? Um, when Paul and Tracy and Shay were there two weeks ago, um, I had given a little, um, it's a little kind of brochure that you open up that sort of just summarizes what, what goes into a flood study, which is kind of helpful to have. Um, we can get some more of those to you or if you've got those or you want to pass, yeah, that's the one. Exactly. Maybe, uh, that's what I'm just gonna kind of have up on the screen is what's inside of that. Um, so, uh, there needs to be some good accurate measure of what the ground looks like, um, and what the river looks like. Um, so all measurements are, are done for that. The other piece is, is how much water would be expected to be coming down all of these rivers in a hundred-year flood event. And then step three and four are the, the engineering work to simulate that hundred-year flood event, uh, with the volume of water and that, that ground surface to, uh, to understand where it's going to spread out, where it's going to go, um, and then map it. So let's walk through those steps and who's going to be doing them and kind of when that will be happening in Teton County. And if you've got any questions, just jump in. Uh, so that first step I talked about was that collection of, collecting good ground surface information, um, topography data. In the past, that would have been done by somebody, uh, doing survey work on the ground and getting a ton of points out and just walking to the ground and getting that. Um, these days, that technology has advanced, uh, so that a lot of that work can be done by, by, uh, collected by airplane. And believe it or not, it collects really, uh, very high accuracy of ground, uh, ground elevation data. This, uh, map is a bit busy, but it, all of the colored areas are those areas in the state where this topography, this LiDAR has been collected or is being planned to be collected. So you can see there's actually a lot of the state where, um, this has been collected already. In Teton County, the pink and the gold areas were those areas that we were able to collect this spring. The green area, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but there's a kind of a green rectangle in, in the eastern part of your county. Um, that information actually was already collected by NRCS along with, um, some collections they were doing in other parts of the state, um, in the summer of 2018. So we don't, uh, we just want to make sure we're not duplicating efforts and, and we'll use that and share that and, uh, um, that information will all be public and all be available. Um, what the, what that will result in is, is some, um, very accurate ground surface, uh, data in the form of one-foot contours. And that information is being processed right now, but should be available, uh, to you, you at the county and anybody, um, starting in January. So Paul, I, you didn't have the answer for that when we met two weeks ago. Um, I know Mike was interested if, if they could use that, um, in the city. And so it would have been available starting in January. Um, as a companion to the information that's collected by air, um, there is survey work that, that supplements that, um, that collection and that's done in-stream, uh, or in-stream, um, survey work because LiDAR actually cannot penetrate the water. So, um, so they need to get the, the channel of a lot of the rivers, some of the rivers, um, to, uh, to get, um, inversion data, uh, to get, to get survey data, um, for some of those spots. And then anytime a river's going through a bridge or a culvert or any sort of constriction, we need better information about, uh, the size and those openings and all of that. So there's, um, survey work that's needed for, for all of those spots. We'd like to try to get a lot of that work done before the snow flies, uh, because that's really needed to, to do the rest of the project. Um, so we have been working pretty quickly with Morrison Merrily and with Paul to, um, to kind of get this started. So they have identified landowners where they expect that they might be crossing their land or may need to be up on the bank of the river near their land and sending out a, a courtesy letter essentially, uh, about that and about when they expect to be out there. And, um, some of those letters, uh, just went out last Friday so that they could give landowners enough notice, uh, because they expect to start some of that work here in, uh, early September. Uh, and we are asking folks to contact either me or the survey, surveyor directly with contact information so that the surveyor can coordinate as they understand, we understand that this is, um, can be a tricky time with hunting and harvest season. So I wanted to just be mindful of that with, with landowners. Um, with that, when we met two weeks ago and we discussed this, Commissioner Hachkis and Paul had talked about it might be helpful for folks to, to, um, to know that the county commissioners are, were a part of this and this isn't being done outside of the county or outside of the county's knowledge. Um, so we did, uh, front, with that suggestion, we did add the county commissioners onto the letter. Um, and so it's probably good to just touch base with you right now to, to see if that's something you want to continue moving forward, if that's okay, or if you've even gotten any calls. I've gotten a few so far and a few where else.
We, we haven't got any that I'm aware of. And do you need to formalize anything? And just to let you know, Tiffany, as a landowner, I got that letter on Monday. So they are out.
You did? Okay.
I, I have not called the, uh, Board of County Commissioners yet though.
Okay.
But. Yeah, that's the key word.
Um, Paul, I, uh, one thing I have not provided to you is the list of the landowners right now, but I, I should have that real soon. They were, um, they haven't done some of the ones on the Sun River. They were just finalizing that. So they didn't give me their final list yet, but I will certainly pass that on to you, um, so you know who, uh, who is expected, who either got or will be expected to get a letter like this.
Yep, that would be good.
I will say for the most part, a lot of times the landowners don't even, um, you know, it's, it's, uh, the surveyors are in and out pretty quickly. So, um, there's typically not a big impact to a landowner, um, but we certainly want to be mindful if they've got, um, you know, livestock or any sort of other hunting issues going on, we want to just be, uh, be careful with that and, uh, respect, respect that work around those things. Okay. Um, I'll just keep moving here. Um, the, uh, after this work, um, the, the next step is that hydrology, which is how much water is going to be in a river during, during a, a 1% flood event. So we will work with USGS and we will be working with a, another contractor, um, to get all the data from stream gauges and other information to determine how much, uh, how much flow will be coming down to those rivers that can produce, uh, produce, uh, those, uh, those results that, which then get used, uh, for the next step, which is the, the engineering and the modeling, the simulation to determine where the water will go when it overflows the channel and, um, and, uh, and then, uh, and mapping that. So, um, these both happen sort of further on down the project, um, but they are a, a pretty significant piece of, of the project that's a necessary step in, in doing a flood study. Um, the final step is really, uh, then we turn it over to FEMA to basically take all that information and then put it onto preliminary FEMA maps. And those aren't final, those also, those go through a review process, um, that I'll talk about in a second. Um, but, uh, and then eventually those get finalized. But that's kind of FEMA's, uh, portion is at the end, is just producing the, the final maps based on the information that, uh, have developed and, uh, gotten feedback. and gotten feedback from you on. So what does this look like for our timing? The topography, that LiDAR and the survey work is kind of happening in the spring and right now in the fall. The hydrology, we expect to have done about a year from now. And then another year, the engineering work and probably not looking at having draft maps for you to even start looking at for a couple more years. So probably early 2023. There's a lot of work that goes into these projects and we've got a lot of stream miles that we're tackling. So it's going to take a while, but just to give you an estimate is that's what we're anticipating. As part of that, we definitely want review of those draft maps. They're not final way any means then. We want to have the public take a look at those and you take a look at those and provide feedback. And if we need to make adjustments, we can do that. And then the FEMA part of it, and then there's a public review of the FEMA maps as well. So there's kind of two times when there's a pretty big involvement from the public or landowners. So you can see there, before the maps would get finalized, which at this point, we're just estimating could be around 2025. Typically, these mapping projects take in the neighborhood of five to seven years. So 2025 maybe, we'll have to just see how things go. But sometimes they get longer. You see the kind of that red box there is just pointing at community contribution. And I just wanted to highlight that right now is that we are, the county has not, we're not, we were able to fund this completely with the FEMA grant. So we did not approach the county for any sort of financial contribution. However, when we get to the point where we have some draft maps available, we would ask that you be involved in this part of the project fairly significantly in that you, we would work with you on this. We would like to send out letters or postcards to landowners that could be affected by the maps so that they could come and take a look at them and ask questions and provide feedback. So that's, I know it's a ways away, but we just wanted to kind of get you, do you a heads up on that, that that would be, could be a potential financial piece of the mailing for those letters or postcards. What does that look like? Here's just an example from the City of Dillon. We worked with Beaverhead County and the City of Dillon on a similar project. We're two-thirds of the way through that project right now. But they sent out letters to affect, to landowners that would potentially be affected to invite them to an open house meeting, which we jointly hosted with them. Actually, this is a photo from Mineral County, so similar kind of thing. But we would host with you open house meetings for folks to learn about the project and to take a look at the draft maps and give folks an opportunity to talk about their particular property one-on-one so they can ask specific questions and really understand what the proposed changes would mean for them.
I have one question. When you said that this was all funded and you're talking about five years, is it so much every year that the government or FEMA forks over? Or do we have to be concerned about it not being completely funded later on?
Great question. Steve, do you want to take that?
Yeah, sure, I can feel that one. So yeah, that's a really good question. We actually, when we applied for the grant for FEMA, it covers the project time period from start to finish. And so, yeah, we're not really at risk of needing more money on this project unless something really big went wrong. But we're in pretty good shape with that. Thanks to FEMA Region 8 for this year, they granted this project award. So we're well covered. And that funding, you know, covers all the LiDAR acquisition, the field survey of the contractor, all our engineering work that we contract. You know, we'll have probably four or five different engineering firms working on these projects over the next five years. So it's a significant lift. We administer all that. You know, no cost for the state's overtime of the projects. So yeah, there have been in the past, sometimes where we've requested some funds from the communities, we were able to do it, as Tiffany mentioned earlier, on this project without having to need that, which is a big benefit to you and your community.
Thank you.
Really, so that's all I have. My next slide is just kind of an ending slide, some discussion. But are there any questions or anything you want to go back and look at?
Tiffany, this is Alan from the Road Department. Can you explain the difference between a 500-year floodplain, 100-year floodplain and a floodway?
Sure. So let's start with the 100 versus the 500, and then I'll tackle the floodway. So the 100-year floodplain is that area that, based on the study information, is expected to be wet or to have a risk of getting flooded in a 100-year flood event. Or as we talked about, a 1% flood event, it's a better way to think of that. So that whole area. The 500-year floodplain you can think about is bigger than that. It would be the area that would be expected to be wet in a bigger flood event like a 500-year flood event. So that happens less often, so it's less than 1%. It's a smaller, it's a 0.2%, you sometimes will see. But that's a bigger flood event. So the 100-year flood event is the one that we focus on for your regulations. That's where your county and the city floodplain regulations apply. That's where banks typically just look at that area. If they're going to finance something, they'll look at if it's in that risk area for the 100-year event. Sometimes they could look at the 500-year because that does have a risk, but it's less of a risk. And we call it a moderate risk versus a high risk. But typically, we just see them using that 100-year one. And that's, and then that gets used for insurance purposes, too. So that's the 100 versus the 500. The floodway is an area inside of the 100-year floodplain and it's a zone that's been designated through engineering to be typically the main channel and sometimes some area beyond that, where you're going to see the highest flows, the fastest-moving water and the deepest water in a flood event. So you can think of that as, that's an even higher risk area. That's a more dangerous area. So your floodplain regulations and floodplain regulations around the state and other counties and cities call out that area in terms of restricting, regulating new construction in there because it is a, it's a more hazardous area to build in. But it's within that 100-year floodplain.
Thank you. So Tiffany, I guess, I've been thinking about the DNRC webpage that has some of the information about different counties and where they're at, not only in the process, but it does give an idea of what, you know, it's not precise that this is what Teton County can expect, but it does give some idea of what the total end product might look like, what kind of changes to expect. So when people ask me, I guess I'm going to steer them to, and in particular, I think Beaverhead County is a pretty good one to look at in comparing what Teton County can expect.
Yep, I think that's, that makes sense. It's hard to know until you do a flood study what the results are going to show. So it's always a little, you know, it's a little risky to take a guess. But you can, I think that's smart to look at other counties and some, what their projects are showing. In the case of Beaverhead County, they did have a mix, like you do, where you have some that had some detailed information, but the majority of it was that kind of approximate shaded areas. And not always, but sometimes we see that when they did that, they used the information they had at the time. But new mapping sometimes will show, you know, a smaller delineation or at least a different delineation. And I guess the bottom line is we and you, and I think everybody's interested in having more accurate mapping at the end of the day. So it'll be different, but it'll be more accurate. With that, I guess with the website, I know, Paul, you do quite a bit with hosting things through the county website. We have produced those project websites just hosted on the DNRC webpage. And we could certainly do that for Teton County unless you would prefer to do that yourself and we could just work with you on posting all the information as it's available so people can have a place to go to kind of find out the status and.
So Tiffany, my first reaction is two places are better than one.
Okay. Okay. Well, I guess we don't have to decide that now, but it's a good, just good something to think about. You know, we want this, this is a joint project. We want to work on it together. We want to provide that information to the public as easily and readily available as we can. So we'll work with you on that moving forward.
All righty, well, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your part in this. And we're looking forward and moving forward with Teton County already.
All right.
Yeah, thank you very much for your time this morning.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, well, thanks again.
Thank you.
Bye.
Take care.
So long. Okay, that was our last business item. Commissioning reports. Deb Coverdale from the ambulance service put in for a Department of Transportation grant for ambulance, which she's done before. And we were notified earlier this week that she received that grant in the amount of $219,000 and some odd cents. There will be a 10% match, which I don't foresee any problems there because we have a capital fund just for ambulances. And I'd like to thank Deb for doing that.
Yep.
And then in case you haven't noticed, Paul has moved across the office, across the hall there. And tomorrow at 11 o'clock, there's going to be another MECO Town Hall meeting that Paul and I have been sitting in on. I don't know if I'm going to make the one tomorrow or not. And they record that and you can pull them up and view them after the fact. But I think they're very worthwhile to keep us up to date on the latest stuff with the COVID funding. Do you have anything? Gee, public comment. Zoom meeting went off without a hitch. I'm amazed.
We're getting good at this, except the last time I couldn't find the right connection. But we got it on my laptop, so we could still see it and hear it. That's all they're going to have to do, their convention. So that's why we got speaker and we've got microphone.
Yeah, and coffee.
Of course.
The door. All righty, well, again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. And our next meeting is scheduled for the 17th. And I don't have to sign this, do I, Oscar?
You do. I'll make sure you get in the right spot now, somewhere around the body.
Sign that. You guys need to sign that. Alan needs to sign these. Get ahold of those people if you would.
Should be on the reservation, sign. Or normally sign.
It said state use only.
Oh, yeah. No, we had to put that.
We did already sign one.
We already signed that reservation because it's going to be a 500.
Oh, I think you're actually the better. Voice is correct and payment is.
Well, thanks, Paul, for bringing that over. That was, you're quite welcome. Hopefully it makes you a little more comfortable in case you start fielding.
I will be asking for a commitment from our planner to stay until 2025.
You can ask.
I'll second that.
Not unreasonable, I don't think.
All in favor?
And when is your term up?
Do you think it'll change the flood?
Slightly.
Like in Miami?
I really think looking at how it changed Dillon is a good example. I don't know what to, I think the city has probably got more potential. Often in the county, doesn't it?
I'll be right back.
Okay.
If I need to do any remodeling, I'm going to get my loan now.
Well, and I mean, regardless, lenders are taking it way more seriously nowadays.
Yeah, exactly. We had it fixed in what, one day?
Yeah, but they want documentation nowadays. It's not just like, yeah, they don't take a landowner at their word.
Yeah, but mine came, and that's, and it explains everything. Mine came back as in. And then, and the year before, I didn't take flood insurance because they doubled it. And it was like, why did I get doubled? Well, had I looked into it.
Well, and now, you know, you've got some other people kind of dabbling in the floodplain. And that is like, I think it's called First Street, put out a bunch of flood information. And it really, it's slick because you can just type in an address and boom. Up comes supposedly a rating, one through five maybe, or one through 10, of what your flood risk is. The problem is that, you know, nobody, I don't know how valid their data that they're basing this on is. And to me, it just kind of complicates a lender's world now. It's like, well, who am I supposed to go to, FEMA? And I think it's still going to be FEMA. I think there's too strong a connection there, but. And I think trying to get this all digitalized to the point where it's a little more user-friendly is big stuff, you know? I mean, those frickin' paper maps, I said frickin'.
I was going to bring the jar over to the meeting.
She's still not as recording.
They're just so hard to deal with. I mean, I've had ruler and, you know, trying to figure out like how many inches and equal a mile and trying to figure out where they are on that paper map. It's hard.
It's just a meander line.
It's just a meander line, the floodplain, basically.
Yes.
When they draw it up and you, there's no measurements of where they're at.
No.
So.
So you have to go to like a section line and say, okay, how far is it from that section line? And then try and make all the conversions and it's like, yeah. I don't think it's going to be a slam dunk ever, you know? There's always gray areas to the flood. And Paula lives in one.
But do you think at some point, once they get all those maps digitized and whatnot, will there be an interaction where you could go out with a GPS unit?
Yes, absolutely.
Take a spot.
Absolutely. Take that point back and yeah, you'll know exactly where, where it is. But I think the other thing is, you know, that aerial photography, you know, now you can use like, well, you could see pivot. And it's like, well, how far away from that are, are they proposing? There's just lots of other things because you can start bringing in other layers. You know, certainly, although I don't do it a lot, is, you know, you can put the cadastral layer on there and say, okay, how do their property lines line up? And that's, that's where we're going with all of this is just grab somebody else's data, as long as it's good data, and stick it on there and compare it and so, yeah.
Aerial views of the last two floods is a pretty good example of where your floodplain is going to be.
Yeah, um, you know, those are kind of, I would, and I'll just, it's my opinion, those are like 20-year events that we probably saw. But unfortunately, we kind of saw them like in two years, but. So yeah, you, you're right, that is a. And can anybody tell you like how often those are? I mean, is it really like a 20-year event or what? I mean, I'm sure people sitting at the table go, well, we went through a lot of dry years too. We were hoping that it would get some high water and.
Well, like on the Sun River, you know, if you go back to the 20s, you know, it was about every 11 years.
Right.
That there was a.
Absolutely, right.
I mean, it's almost the same. Right through.
And I've said this before, but thank you for your work you do with the GIS.
Yeah.
You're welcome. And your commitment to stay until 2025.
I think 2027 because she said it might be a little.
Yeah, that was estimated.
Yeah, I was looking at that going, oh, man.
You have to see your project through.
That's what I assume.
It's been proven seconded, but we just haven't voted yet, so.
Done?
Yep.
Thanks, Paul.
Um, she keeps all of those comments because I don't have any.
So you're thrilled to be getting the child support money or is that like a big headache?